Espero un poco, un poquito más Para llevarte mi felicidad. Espero un poco, un poquito más. Me moriría si te vas. Espero un poco, un poquito más. Para llevarte mi felicidad. Espero un poco, un poquito más.
Y de las grandes composiciones del maestro José José. Que viva el príncipe.
En tus manos yo aprendí a beber agua. Fuego río que se quedó preso en tu jaula. Porque yo corté mis alas y el alpiste que me dabas Fue tan poco y sin embargo yo te amaba. Fue mi canto para ti siempre completo. Sin ti no pude volar en otro cielo. Pero me dejaste solo, confundido y olvidado. Y otra mano me ofreció el fruto anhelado. Lo que un día fue no será. Ya no vuelvas a buscarme. No tengo nada que darte. De tu alpiste me cansé. Vete a volar a otro cielo. Y deja abierta tu jaula. Tal vez a trago río caigan pero darle de beber. He podido ayudarme a vivir. He podido ayudarme a vivir. He podido ayudarme a vivir. No he pensando en tu amor. Ayudarme a vivir. He pensando en tu amor no he podido ayudarme a vivir.
Mariachi Jodya, sí señor.
Good morning, one more round of applause for Las Vegas High School Mariachi Oya. For everyone's knowledge, the Las Vegas Valley Water District meeting will commence right after our BCC Latin Heritage Month celebration. So please stay put and we'll get started right after our celebration. Please stand for the invocation. All right, please stand for the invocation by Pastor Benny Jackies from Victory Outreach Las Vegas, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
That was amazing, amen. I'm still, you know, that was beautiful. If I could have everybody, please bow their heads, close their eyes. Heavenly Father, we come before you this beautiful morning, God, and just giving you all the glory, the honor, and the praise, God, for everything that you have done, what you're doing, and what you're gonna do, Lord. I pray, my God, for this meeting, this morning, God. I pray for Commissioner Tick, God, and all his cabinet, Lord. And I just pray that you would grant them wits, Nick, God, to make the right decisions, Lord, God. And we just thank you, God, for everything, once again, God, that you have done and that you're going to do, God. Because even though we don't know, God, what the future holds, we know that you have everything under control, God. And we thank you for that, Lord. Bless, my God, this meeting, this morning. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Mr. Shiller.
Good morning, Commissioners. First item is to acknowledge and honor exceptional citizens and organizations in Clark County to commemorate Latino Heritage Month.
Please roll the tape.
Hello, I'm Clark County Commissioner Tick Sagerblum, proudly representing District E. Today, I'm honored and excited to celebrate the start of Latino Heritage Month. This month is the time to reflect on the history, culture, and countless contributions of our Latino community, not just in Clark County but across the nation. Latino Heritage Month is more than a celebration. It is a recognition of the backbone of this country. Latinos have built, strengthened, and enriched our communities through hard work, resilience, and leadership. And now more than ever, with everything happening across the country, we must stand firmly with our Latino community. We celebrate not only heritage but also the fight for opportunity, dignity, and justice that continues today. I'm also proud to recognize two distinguished honorees whose work and leadership inspire us all. My first honoree is Melissa Corral. Melissa is the Deputy Managing Attorney for the UNLV Immigration Clinic's Community Advocacy Office, Boyd School of Law Resource that provides free legal assistance for deportation defense, unaccompanied children, DACA renewals, and immigration support for the UNLV community. Before joining the clinic in 2022, Melissa spent four years at the Legal Aid Center of Southern Nevada developing expertise in immigration and family law. She also served as a law clerk to the Honorable Linda Marquis in the Family Division of the Eighth Judicial District Court. And began her journey as a student attorney at the UNLV Immigration Clinic. Raised in Durango, Mexico, Melissa has always been active in her community. She currently serves as President of the Nevada Latino Bar Association and is past President of the Boyd School of Law alumni. She was named among the top attorneys by Nevada Business Magazine. Her dedication, advocacy, and leadership have left a lasting impact on countless families in Clark County, and we are proud to honor her today. My second honoree is a very close personal friend of mine, Claudia Noriega Bernstein, an inner abundance coach, award-winning podcaster, and bestselling author dedicated to empowering women and children to live authentically and abundantly. Born in Peru and now based in Las Vegas, Claudia has combined her personal journey of reinvention with her expertise in abundance coaching to help women, especially mothers, release fear, reclaim their identity, and create meaningful lives. Her podcast, Don't Shrink to Fit, provides a space for women to share stories of resilience and transformation. It ranks among the top 5% worldwide and has received both Women's in Podcasting Award and the 50 Over 50 Award through her coaching, writing, and storytelling. Claudia has inspired women around the world to embrace change, live authentically, and pursue lives of abundance. We are proud to honor her today for the hope and empowerment she brings to so many in our community. She also has beautiful daughters and, of course, her great husband, Ed. As we honor Melissa and Claudia, we are reminded of why Latino Heritage Month is so important. It is about recognizing leaders who move our community forward while celebrating the culture, values, and history that make Clark County stronger. Clark County strongs with its Latino community. We will always support, protect, and celebrate you, not only during Latino Heritage Month but every day of the year. Together with leaders like Melissa and Claudia paving the way, we will continue to moving District E and all of Clark County forward. It's always important to remember, Las Vegas, Nevada, we were part of Mexico before we were part of the United States. So we have a strong tradition with Latino families and Latin America, and we can never forget that. Muchos gracias and happy Latino Heritage Month.
Hello, everyone. I'm Clark County Commissioner William McCurdy II. As we gather to celebrate Latino Heritage Month, it is both a privilege and a responsibility to honor the countless ways Latinos have shaped the story of Clark County. From building vibrant neighborhoods and leading in our schools and universities to enriching our culture with art, faith, and tradition, Latinos are the heart of what makes our community strong and dynamic. Today, we have the distinct honor of recognizing two extraordinary leaders who embody these contributions through their service and vision, Dr. Marcela Rodriguez Campo and Father Jose Gregorio Leon Pinata. Each of them, in their own way, has made lasting contributions that inspire and strengthen our community. Dr. Marcela Rodriguez Campo has dedicated her career to advancing equity, inclusion, and educational opportunity. From leading the 2024 Southern Nevada Diversity Summit to launching the Multicultural Collective at Nevada State University to commissioning landmark works of public art that celebrate cultural and identity and belonging. Her leadership has created spaces where all voices are heard and all communities are celebrated. She is a true advocate for empowerment, civic engagement, and the transformative power of education and culture. Likewise, Father Gregorio has devoted more than two decades to serving Southern Nevada's faith community with compassion, humility, and unwavering dedication. Since relocating from Venezuela in 2003, he has ministered at some of the largest Latino parishes in our valley and for 20 years has guided the Catholic Charismatic Renewal Movement, bringing together thousands in faith and fellowship. He is beloved not only by his parishioners but also by the broader community for the way he uplifts families and strengthens our shared bonds of unity. Dr. Rodriguez and Father Gregorio remind us of what Latino Heritage Month is truly about, celebrating leaders who build bridges, open doors, and are bringing people together. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we are honored to recognize them for their leadership, vision, and service. Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Commissioner Becker, and it's my honor to recognize my good friend Peter Guzman for Latino Heritage Month. I've known Peter for many years, and I've seen the incredible impact he's had on our community. As President of the Latin Chamber of Commerce, he's not just led the largest Hispanic chamber in Nevada. He's been a true advocate for Latino businesses and a resource for all of us. His leadership has made a real difference in Clark County. Peter's also a successful Realtor, small business owner, and investor, helping countless families make home ownership a reality. With over 700 million in career sales, his influence in the valley speaks for itself. Most important to Peter is his family. To see his face light up when he talks about his wife and kids is amazing. Peter was born in California, but he's been a proud Nevadan since he was two years old. His journey is one of hard work, dedication, and always giving back to the community that raised him. Peter, thank you for everything you do. Your friendship, leadership, and constant drive to help others are so appreciated. This recognition is so well deserved. Congratulations, my friend.
Thank you to our colleague Chair Sagerblum for recognizing Latino Heritage Month at today's board meeting. For our District A honoree, I'm proud to recognize Danielle Vial. Danielle is an Afro-Chicano multimedia artist and team member of the Silverado Ranch Community Center. As the center's chef, Danielle leads cooking classes for people of all ages and backgrounds. She graduated from Le Cordon Bleu and has two decades of experience in the food industry. Specializing in fine culinary arts from butchery to pastry, she approaches her work with compassion and determination, striking a balance between the food we need and the food we deserve, regardless of income level or socioeconomic status. It is her life's goal to find the intersections of culture, community, and joy in her cooking and art. In addition to fine cooking, Danielle is an expert in ceramics, watercolor, candle making, crochet, relief painting, gold leaf embellishments, and more. But just when you thought she couldn't be more artistic, Danielle is also a trained vocalist with the ability to sing in English, Spanish, and Portuguese. In her free time, Danielle is passionate about vintage fashion and history. She is also a self-proclaimed super nerd. Thank you for everything you do for our community, Danielle. In your wise words, may everyone find peace and pie in this life.
Hello, my name is Jim Gibson, Clark County Commissioner for District G. As we start celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month this year, we wanted to recognize those individuals in Southern Nevada who have chosen to make a career teaching and celebrating Hispanic culture and most importantly, ensuring that our youth continue to learn Latin traditions. Guadalupe and Fernando Gonzalez have distinguished themselves as a dynamic duo in the mariachi education community throughout the United States and Mexico. At the age of 19, Guadalupe made her performance debut with the first all-female professional mariachi, Reina de Los Angeles, under the direction of world-renowned mariachi composer and arranger Jose Hernandez. Meanwhile, Fernando worked with mariachi boss de América, a premier Los Angeles-based mariachi. He also worked as a freelance musician throughout Los Angeles for over 10 years. The Gonzalez duo have been married for over 25 years and served as mariachi co-directors at the award-winning Del Sol Academy of the Performing Arts located in District G, as well as the College of Southern Nevada. Guadalupe and Fernando have won numerous awards directing mariachis, including the Encuentro Internacional de Mariachi Showcase in Guadalajara, Jalisco. Mariachi youth competition winners for three years in a row and Battle of the Mariachis competition winners in 2005, 2006, and 2019. Thank you, Guadalupe and Fernando, for teaching the next generation not only a skill in music but an avenue to celebrate Mexican culture for years to come. I also want to honor another outstanding couple in Clark County. Juan and Darcy Vasquez are the owners of Juan's Flaming Fajitas. I'm sure there aren't many of us here today that haven't been to a Juan's Flaming Fajitas. It has quickly grown to be a local favorite. Juan grew up in and ate Oklahoma and learned firsthand the restaurant business from his uncle. Juan was a line cook for several years and learned every aspect of the restaurant trade. Darcy moved to Oklahoma from California and was a server at Juan's uncle's restaurant. As you can guess, the line cook and the server fell in love. They moved to Henderson in 1996, got married on my birthday, Cinco de Mayo, so Juan would never forget their anniversary. And in 2013, they launched their first restaurant on West Tropicana with its signature tableside presentation of flaming chicken, beef, pork, and shrimp fajitas. In 2018, Juan and Darcy worked closely with the city of Henderson to open their second location on Water Street, one of my favorite go-to spots. And in 2022, opened their third on Centennial Parkway. Juan and Darcy have three children, Kylie, Brady, and Maddox, and two grandchildren, Kason and Navy. Congratulations, Juan and Darcy. You've become a staple for quality Mexican food in every corner of our community, and we wish you nothing but happiness and success.
Good morning and congratulations to all of those honorees that are here today. It's very exciting for me to recognize people for the Latino Heritage Month. We are super excited. We're such a melting pot here in Clark County. We have amazing people from all walks of life within our Latino community. And it really is our way of saying thank you for your contributions, and we couldn't be more proud. I, in particular, am super excited about my two folks. One, Marley, she is a boxer, which you'll hear a little bit more about her. And Mario, who is with Endot, and I've watched him grow up through public service. So I can't wait to tell you more about them. Each one of them are a real part of our future and where we are today. And I think that you'll be excited too. So let's start with Marley. I'm going to tell you about Marley. Marley Guerrero, she is a 15-year-old amateur boxer who competes in boxing, USA Boxing, and through our Center Ring program. And for those of you that know, we have about 140 boxers with us at Center Ring. She's ranked number three in the nation at the 114 weight, and she's ranked number two in the nation at the 119 weight. She is the Silver Gloves National Champion. She's been with us at Center Ring since she was eight years old. She's had over 40 fights. But let me tell you about Marley, what makes her super special. Marley is only 15, but every day she's in the gym, she's working hard. She's so friendly, she's personable, her grades are great, she's doing good. But she stops every single day to say hello to all the adults. She respects everything that everybody's doing. She says thank you more times than most. But she also takes the younger ones by the hand and says, let me show you how to do this. And that's a lot for a 15-year-old. I'm super excited for everything that she's done nationally and the ranking. But I'm more excited for Marley, for the person that she is and what she will be. And our community should have a lot more Marleys in it. So Marley, congratulations. I always love seeing you with that big smile. And I hope that your parents know what an amazing kid you are, and I look forward to seeing where you go in the future. Let's talk about Mario Gomez. So Mario, I was in the legislature and I served with Mario, and he was just a young buck coming up in the system. And unfortunately, Mario couldn't be here today, which makes me sad. But better yet, his son is going to be here. And I know how important it is with Mario and family. And I'm so glad that his son can come today to accept this award because he really has a lot to be proud of his dad. His dad started in the system, he's worked his way up all the way to number two when it comes to our roads at Endot. But he has brought people up along the way. So I like to tease Mario because I knew him when he was just wearing jeans and a work shirt, and now he's in a tie. But at the end of the day, Mario has done a lot for our roads here in Southern Nevada, and he continues to work hard for all of us. And he really has made a huge impact to the state. So congratulations, Mario. I know that your son must be super proud. I'm sure he's beaming. And we miss you, but know that everything that you do does make a difference in public service. Public service for over 25 years is very important to folks to know. You can do it, and it really is so rewarding. So congratulations to both of my awardees and everybody here today. And please stop and say thank you and get to know the people in your neighborhood. Again, happy Latino Heritage Month. September is such a great time for this. Don't forget to recognize the culture, the melting pot, who we are as a community, and all the amazing people. So congratulations to each and every one of you, and can't wait to see where you go in the future.
Hi, I'm Justin Jones, your Clark County Commissioner for District F. Although I'm unable to be here today, I want to ensure and recognize and celebrate two incredible honorees by presenting them with proclamations on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. During Latino Heritage Month, we celebrate the rich cultural legacy, resilience, and contribution of our Latino community here in Clark County. Today, I'm proud to honor two remarkable individuals whose work is transforming lives, Gary Gutierrez and Hani Spadora. I'm excited to be here today with Gary Gutierrez in his shop. Gary's story is one of grit, growth, and giving back. The son of Nicaraguan immigrants, he overcame early challenges and found purpose through the gang intervention program at Walnut Recreation Center. That turning point led him to pursue education, achieve homeownership, and ultimately become an entrepreneur. Today, Gary is the founder of Houdini Wraps, a family-run business that transforms vehicles into works of art and the creator of Houdini Wraps Academy, where he is training the next generation of skilled professionals and helping others find the same opportunities that once changed his own lives. Gary joined us on our Cool Summer Program this last summer and did an amazing job with all of the kids. And I just wanted to say, Gary, thank you so much for all of your work in town as a small business owner and for teaching the next generation. Tell us a little bit about your experience with the Cool Summer Program.
That was pretty fun, actually. I enjoyed every moment of it, just seeing the kids spark up. It was really cool.
Well, thank you so much on behalf of Clark County. We want to present you with this proclamation. Thanks, Gary. I'm here with Hani Spadora. Hani was born in Cuba and raised with a deep understanding that survival is not enough. She turned her lived experience into purpose, launching the JS Legacy Builders Foundation and Adulting 101A Life Skills Program, giving teens the tools schools often don't teach, from budgeting to renting to cooking and navigating real life. Hani's work with the Cool Summer Initiative, her leadership with the NARAP community, and her advocacy as a mother all reflect one thing: she leads with heart, purpose, and action. Thank you so much, Hani, for your work on the Cool Summer Program. We appreciate you so much. Tell us a little bit about your experience.
It's been something magnificent to be able to bring this program to our kids in Clark County, to all the kids that we know need this information, but they are not getting it.
Thanks, Hani. You're the best. To both of you, thank you so much for inspiring us, and happy Latino Heritage Month.
Muchas gracias, mi gente. Se les quiere.
One more time for all of our honorees. I'm going to hand it over to Peter Guzman to say a few words.
So I just want to, first of all, I'm honored to be standing with all of you, the trailblazers. It's unbelievable. It's humbling. Thank you for all that you do. To my Board of Directors, can you please stand? Because there's no way I'd do any of this without you guys, ambassadors. And my Judy, Judy Segal, please stand. The one in the yellow, you can see her from a mile away. Thank you, guys. And lastly, real quick, I just want to thank Commissioner April Becker. It's a special honor to get this from you. Your family has been trailblazing Nevada for a long time. Grateful. Grateful that I got this from you. Thank you.
I just want to say I'm very honored to be here among these amazing people. You know, as Latins, as Hispanics, we come to this country with dreams. That's how I came here. And I am so proud for everything I have accomplished. And I want to be a billboard of possibility to every young woman that comes to this country and think that their dreams are too big. They're possible. You're enough, you're worthy, and you never have to shrink to fit again. Thank you.
I just want to give a big thanks to Commissioner McCurdy as well as to Diana for this honor. Thank you for loving us loudly, especially right now. With everything that's going on in our country now more than ever, our community needs to hear the love that you all have for us because it's really tough out there. But we belong here, and we're here to stay. Thank you.
Father Gregorio couldn't be here today. He's in Venezuela right now, but he's so happy to receive this. He has been here in Las Vegas for over 20 years. If you go to St. Anne's, you know who Father Gregorio is. And you know, we all want to be like Father Gregorio, and he's our dad. So we want to always make sure we get a smile from him. Thank you in Father Gregorio's name.
It's fine. We'll get there. Thank you so much. First and foremost, I want to thank Commissioner Sagerblum and his staff, Jorge Beatriz and Javier, for considering me and recognizing me. I promise I did not look at her speech, but I think it's important to say that in times like this, when the integrity of people like us is being questioned and that, like my family, it is important to highlight what we contribute to this community and not for the potential threats that we might pose. So thank you very much to the Commissioner. Second, I want to thank my mom and my family. I would not be here standing in front of you if it wasn't for all of them. So muchas gracias, mommy. Lastly, I want to thank my work family, the UNLV Immigration Clinic. In the past nine months, our calls have quadrupled. In the past nine months, our calls have quadrupled. That's because the need for our services is so great. However, we've had to let go of people instead of being able to fire more due to funding, due to cuts in fundings. So your support is needed more than ever. So again, Commissioner, for highlighting the work I do and, in essence, the work that the UNLV Immigration Clinic does. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, everyone. And I know Commissioner Jones couldn't be here, but I did get to see him. We got to see him last week. So I know what his sentiment is. And thank you, everyone, who believed in the program. And if you don't know about the program, it's called Adulting 101. Make sure you find us online. We are trying to just help out our kids where we know they need it, but it's not being helped, okay? From, we're talking financial literacy, insurance, home ec. So make sure you find us online. It's completely free to them. And thank you all for, you know, just being here and showing up. And en español, because she does not speak English. Mami, muchisimas gracias. Te quiero muchísimo, y no voy a hablar más porque si no voy a llorar. So thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, so much. On behalf of my team, my whole family, I just want to thank you. It's an honor to be here next to some outrageous, courageous Latinos, especially in these times when we got to represent. And thank you, Alex Bernal, with the Gang Intervention Program, someone that is really close to my heart. And that's why we created the academy to show the younger youth and people around my age or older people that just want to get into our industry. Thank you again so much.
Just wanted to first say that I was not informed we were going to have to make a speech. Second, I think it's only appropriate to first thank the people who hired me. So thank you to Michelle, Kathy, Melanie, and Natalie, who was not here today. But this is really crazy and super cool. And I just want to remind everyone that joy is a form of resistance. So in these trying times, if you feel sad, please remember to engage with each other, engage in a good meal, go to your parks, have fun at your community centers, be together. The only thing that can keep us separate is actually separating us. So have a great rest of your day, and thank you so much. Que viva los otros, viva los latinos.
Buenos dias. Good morning, everyone. First, we want to thank our principal at Adultwell Academy, Ms. Nadia Steger. Our colleagues that are here today, Melissa Mendoza, Nikki Hunt, and Marilyn Boucher. Thank you for being here. It's a true honor, Commissioner Gibson, for nominating us for this honor. We've been part of the Clark County School District Mariachi Program now for over 17 years. And we moved here for this reason. And we really do believe in what we do to, not only to bring students the joy of a quality music education, but using mariachi music as a vehicle to provide that music education has become our passion, and it's now become our purpose. And we completely give our entire lives to doing it and to our students. And it truly is an honor to be recognized today for our works. And we truly do appreciate being here. Thank you.
I think my husband said it all, pero buenos dias y muchas gracias, señor Gibson, por el honor. And we're truly grateful and feel really blessed to be here among all these amazing people. I'm truly, truly honored. So God bless you guys for everything that you guys do. I also want to thank our amazing magnet team that are here with us today, because without them, we can't do what we do. But without our amazing young students out there in Clark County, we couldn't do what we love to do. So let's keep the arts going, let's keep music and any kind of arts, because that's honestly what's keeping our kids out there doing well. Y que viva los latinos, que viven los hispanos. Gracias.
It's such an honor to be standing here today. It's such a blessing. And I just wanted to say a huge thank you to all of our commissioners, and especially Marilyn Kirkpatrick, because without her, not just me, but all the kids in my boxing gym, we wouldn't have half the opportunities that we're experiencing now. We wouldn't be able to travel anywhere or showcase our skills around the whole U.S. So it's a big opportunity for us. And I want to give a huge thank you to my parents and my coaches, because they're always there by my side. And I'm just so honored, because this is crazy for me. And I've been boxing for eight years of my life. And thanks to Marilyn, I've had so many opportunities and so many accomplishments. So thank you. Gracias a todos por este honor. Gracias.
I just want to say a special thank you to Commissioner Gibson for jump-starting Water Street down in Henderson. Commissioners, thank you as well. I want to thank my family, our 350 employees who made this possible. Thank you very much. We have great team members. Couldn't do this without them. So thank you very much. Gracias a mi jefa, mi papá, y toda la comunidad hispana por su apoyo. Gracias.
So my dad wasn't able to make it today, but I want to thank Commissioner McPatrick as well for his honor. I think the video said, you know, more than 20 years in Las Vegas at Endot. So it's great to see him being recognized.
All right, thank you, everyone. One more time for honorees. And happy birthday, Marcela. We'll now recess our BCC meeting for five minutes to prepare for the Los Angeles Valley Water District meeting.
It's in the Board of County Commissioners' combat.
All right, the Board of County Commission meeting will come to order. Manager Schiller.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Your next item is to present a proclamation to recognize Fall Prevention Month in Clark County.
Commissioner Nash.
Thank you very much. First, I want to open by thanking our speakers today for their patience as we work through that last meeting and a half. But we're glad you're here to help us recognize September as Fall Prevention Month. I want to in particular recognize Dr. Jen Nash, Chair of the Nevada Goes Fall Free Coalition and Professor of Physical Therapy at UNLV, as well as Shannon Martin, Vice Chair of the Coalition, for being here today. I'll ask you to join us up here as we recognize you for the work you're doing, but also educate the community. Falls are the leading cause of both fatal and non-fatal injuries among older adults in the United States, with 28% of older adults experiencing a fall each year. I'm especially pleased to get to partner with these individuals and their organizations on September 19th as we host a fall prevention screening event at the Silverado Ranch Community Center from 12 to 2. We invite the entire community to come join us there. And we will turn the microphone over to Dr. Nash.
Good morning, Commissioners. On behalf of the Nevada Goes Fall Free Coalition, I want to thank you for recognizing Fall Prevention Awareness Week. Falls remain the leading cause of injury for older adults in Clark County, but the good news is that they are preventable. This proclamation sends a powerful message that our community values safety, independence, and quality of life for all ages. I want to invite the public to join us this Friday from 12 to 2 at the Silverado Ranch Community Center, where we will be performing balance and memory screens for those interested. We will bring out the physical therapy students from UNLV to help us provide these assessments, as well as Toro Occupational Therapy. It's a wonderful opportunity to learn personal fall prevention strategies and connect with community resources. Again, thank you for your leadership and shining a light on this very important public health issue.
Would you join me in sharing our appreciation with Shannon and Dr. Nash? And in addition to our thanks, we have the pleasure of declaring formally Nevada Goes Fall Free Coalition and Fall Prevention Awareness Week. And I present this to you both. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, our next item is to recognize Clark County employees who have been selected as Clark County Value Champions.
My name's Colleen Bahrov, and I'm a Chief Deputy District Attorney at the Clark County District Attorney's Office. I'm the Team Chief of the Major Fraud and Elder Abuse Unit. And I nominated Jessica Banks as a Value Champion for multiple reasons. She works diligently on every case that we have. She goes above and beyond to gather all of the records that we need. She also makes sure that she's looking into any sort of information that could really shed additional light on what's going on with our cases. Because she is so diligent, she has, in fact, helped us in the prosecution of some cases where the allegation wasn't what it seemed. We are so proud that she has been chosen to be a Value Champion for Clark County. Congratulations, Jessica.
My name is Carla Palma, and I'm with the Clark County Building Department. And I'm nominating Brian Lenihan for the Value Champion. Brian embodies forward-thinking innovation. He consistently supports his team ideas and brings proactive mindset to every project. He welcomes learning and mastering new skills to stay ahead of the curve, making him our greatest resource for tackling complex project challenges. While his strong and energetic personality can sometimes be mistaken for intensity, I believe it only reflects his deep passion for his commitment to safety, infrastructure, and public safety, while representing the Clark County core values of service, integrity, and leadership. Congratulations, Brian.
How about a shout-out for our Clark County employees? On behalf of the Commissioners and myself, I really want to highlight we got the Building Department and the District Attorney's Office. But as I always say, when you go across to all of our departments and our 10,000 employees, they all do magnificent things, and they do it every day. Particularly, times are good, times are bad, doesn't matter. We're always doing it. So I want to thank you for that. And then the second piece I wanted to do is- And then the second piece I wanted to do a shout-out for is, we're talking about their talents. This last weekend, we had our Clark County's Got Talent Competition right here at our own amphitheater. A little bit of a highlight, we're going to try to have some of them come perform at some of our Commissioner meetings, and it was shocking. They were amazing. So I shouldn't be shocked, like, everybody has tons of talent. I don't have any talent, but they do. I got forced to emcee it, and it was a little rough, but anyway, congratulations, and I'm so thankful for what you do every day, and I'm really honored that we can do this program for you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time to speak on the item that is currently on the agenda? We asked you to state your first and last name, and you'll be limited to three minutes. Anyone that would like to come forward at this time? Seeing no one, we'll turn it over to County Manager Shiller.
Commissioners, your next item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on August 19th, 2025.
Have a motion for approval by Commissioner Gibson. Please cast your vote. Motion is adopted.
Your next item is approval of the agenda with the inclusion of any emergency items and deletion of any items. Staff is requesting that item number 42, under your public hearing, be deleted from your agenda, and additionally requesting that item number 35 be held until our next meeting on October 7th, 2025.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gibson. Please cast your vote. Motion is adopted.
Can now move on to the approval of your consent agenda consisting of items number seven through number 41.
Commissioner Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I don't want to take items 12 or 34 off the agenda, but I'd like some comments to be read, at least on the record for future. So here's what I would say. I have consistently voted against the annual foundation on, for the last probably seven years, but I also made a lot of ask, and I made a lot of requests, and I feel that I today could support both items 12 and 34. I know shocker for everybody, but I feel like I could support it because they have truly done everything that they said they would. They are consistent in my office trying to address the issues, but I also want to make note that the contract says that it's one year, but with four-year renewals. I just want to confirm that the renewals would have to come back before this board, because I'm good with doing this in baby steps on one year, so I want to move forward if that's the case.
We can do that.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, I just wanted, shocking everybody, seven years later, I'm going outside the ordinary, but I do appreciate them going the extra steps coming into my office on a regular basis so that I can properly address my constituents, so it goes a long ways when we do it right.
While we're all in shock, I move approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gibson. Please cast your vote. Motion is adopted.
We can now move to introduction of ordinances. Item 44 is an ordinance to amend Clark County Air Quality Regulations, Section 13 and 14, to incorporate by reference updates to delegated federal national emission standards for hazardous air pollutants and new source performance standards respectively in effect as of July 1st, 2025. Update subpart titles of NESHAPS and NCPS as necessary and providing for other matters properly related thereto and set a public hearing.
We'll introduce the ordinance and set the public hearing for October 7th, 2025 at 10:00 a.m.
Can now move, it's past 10:00 a.m., so we can move to the public hearing section of your agenda. Item 43 is to conduct a public hearing to approve or deny a special event preliminary approval application from Holiday 1 to hold the Halloween Pumpkin Patch at 7413 South Rainbow Boulevard and 71 East Silverado Ranch Boulevard from October 3rd, 2025 to October 31st, 2025, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Welcome, Mr. Kiano.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Vince Kiano, Interim Director of Clark County Sports and Special Events. So the, just to go back, the special event application is for Halloween Town Pumpkin Patch. The dates are from October 2nd to October 31, and the daily hours of operations from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Estimated number of attendees per location is approximately 300 per day. First location is on 71 East Silverado Ranch, which is on the corner of Silverado Ranch Boulevard and Las Vegas Boulevard. The event will have a pumpkin patch with rides and games for families with children under 11 years old. Location number two is located at 7413 South Rainbow, which is on the corner of Rainbow Boulevard and Warm Springs Road, which is, I believe, behind the Sprouts. That event will have a holiday pumpkin patch with carnival rides, games, food trucks, and concession tents. So this item was brought before the Board under Clark County Code 2.70050, Section E Subsection 6, which states, "The special event and/or the event organizer has had previous compliance issues associated with events." So in the previous years, the organizers did not submit permit applications for previous years' events with the Fire Department. With comprehensive planning, they failed to submit temporary use applications and supplemental documentations in the previous years, and there's also unsettled fees with business The preliminary assessment, the following applications are currently pending with business license. For the 71 East Silverado Ranch, the temporary holiday events permit, and also the carnival permit, but it is with a licensed carnival operator, which is GR81 Amusements. These applications were submitted, and they're just pending approval and processing. For the 7413 South Rainbow Boulevard, again, these applications have been submitted and under process. The holiday events permit and also the carnival permit, again, with GR81 Amusements. On the last bullet point, the general promoter's license, I just want to provide the Board with an update that it is licensed already, so it's currently licensed. This is just a site plan of where the event's going to be located. This is the one on South Rainbow, and this is also the site plan for the Silverado Ranch, which is on the corner of Las Vegas Boulevard and Silverado Ranch. We do have the event organizer, John Rubico, present. We also have, from the Fire Department, we have Chief Wayne Daly. We have Alexis Barajas with the Southern Nevada Health District, and I believe we have Director Real with Comprehensive Planning. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to come forward at this time? Hearing seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to Commissioner Nat.
Thank you, thank you, Director Kiano, for your attention to this item. This is one of the first like-it that we have seen. There is some history with this applicant, so I want to make a few things clear for the record. Approval of today's preliminary application in no way guarantees anything. This is the start of your opportunity to come into compliance with the county to ascertain any permits that you might need relative to fire prevention, Southern Nevada Health District, business licensing, and comprehensive planning. And perhaps, Mr. Rubico, if you could step forward, I just want to be crystal clear that you acknowledge the need to quickly file those applications as soon as this meeting's concluded, because we're already under a compressed timeline. And if you could also just confirm that you understand that nothing is to be placed on these sites until the relevant and necessary permits are received.
Absolutely. What I would like to tell you is, these permits have been in since August 2nd in every division. There is nothing missing or miscompliant at this phase. Last year, there was an issue that was impossible to overcome in the 14-day window that we had. Immediately after the event, where they required to have a carnival license, we had the carnival apply for a license immediately, which is a temporary status for, second temporary status. So what the county asked us to comply with last year was complied with immediately after last year's season. This year, we submitted, August 2nd early, so everybody could give us the feedback, and we could follow the feedback. Every division has an application in, pending approval.
Just take a pause there. Director Kiano, I don't know if you have that information, or if those representatives are here to confirm that applications have been submitted for, really, it's the four relevant departments and agency.
Vince Kiano, for the record, so with business license, he is in compliance currently. I can't speak with, can't speak for the other departments, but I do know Chief Daly did mention that his applications are, have been submitted for the Fire Department.
Great. I guess since they took the time to be here, I'll just open the floor. If the representative from the Health District or the Planning Department have anything to add, this would be the time to do it. I don't have any questions, but you're welcome to come forward and address anything related to issues between the applicant and the Health District. Thank you. Either one.
Good morning. Alexis Barajas, Environmental Health Supervisor with the Southern Nevada Health District. We have had previous issues, but the applications for this year have not yet been submitted. We're waiting for the approval from this board for him to process those.
Thank you. Director Real.
Yes, Sammy Real with the Department of Comprehensive Planning. My understanding as of, I think, 8 o'clock this morning, staff has been working with Mr. Rubico on the applications for the two sites. They haven't been officially submitted yet, but my understanding is, is that the documents are about correct, and they should be finished here pretty soon.
Thank you. So by my count, we have submittals into Clark County Business Licensing and into Clark County Fire Prevention. I assume, Chief Daly, that's accurate, but pending the decision of this body, you'll have to submit the applications to the Health District and to, and continue working through the official process with planning. Is that different than your understanding?
We made contact with the Health Department. They notified us we have to wait till this board's decision before we go ahead. The files are fully ready to be submitted. As far as Fire Department, they're in the cart, waiting for us to hit the submit button.
I think Fire and Business, you're good. It's planning.
Planning, I met with Jason last Thursday. They had me some corrections yesterday. We get inspections now, and that messes up the process of the county, but they like it now, because we're getting inspections now, sooner to the event, not six months out. So he's working with me in that regards, and that's what slowed us down in zoning. I should have those approvals as soon as I walk outside.
My point, you are now, once this body makes a decision, you will be on the clock. You understand that, right? All of the submittals that you can submit will be pending, will be due very quickly.
I believe everything is already in. I believe we'll have approvals before Thursday or Friday this week.
But not everything is already in, right? Just, I just want you to acknowledge that, so the record's clear. The Health District, you have to submit pending the decision of this board.
That's correct, sir.
Thank you. Director Kiano, are there any outstanding fines from prior years related to this application?
There is, there's a penalty that needs to be paid, but he has until January 6, 2007. There's certain, maybe I could defer to our counsel for the specifics.
Yes, there were about $40,000 in fees and fines from last year through the hearing officer process. It was appealed, and through an agreement between the department and his representative, legal counsel, those fees will be held in abeyance until January of next year to show that he can, you know, go through the process properly, and should he be able to meet all of the conditions that the county needs to be approved for this year, then those fines will go away.
You must have good representation. Okay.
Sorry, to clarify, it will go down from, it will be significantly reduced, not fully go away.
Correct. Okay, the, they didn't want to consider requiring those payments to be made in conjunction with any approval today?
Sorry, I don't.
It seems odd to approve another application before past due payments have been made, does it not?
So those fines are specific to what occurred last year, and so the agreement was to incentivize compliance.
Okay. So you're, you are fully incentivized, then, to be in compliance?
Obviously, I would have paid it in advance, but they cannot pay it till January 2nd. It's a $1,000 fine.
Well, I'm sure you could pay the $40,000 in advance if that's what you wanted. I'm sure we'd be happy to do that, but you're right. It doesn't drop till 1,000 until you've proven that you can come into compliance.
I think part of the agreement was, we have to operate a season without any issues, and then there'll be a $1,000 fine.
Correct. All right, is there anything I'm missing, either from County Council or any of the relevant departments?
May I ask a question? I'm a little perplexed, because I thought that full application comes in, and then it spans out to all the different departments, and they would have to at least have documentation before it got to us, so I must have misstepped my own ordinance that I worked on, but what is the, what's the follow-up piece to make sure that it gets finished? Because I just, I guess I envisioned it a little bit different, so what's the follow-up piece? Well, then you notify the, because this is the first that's actually been through the full public hearing process. So then what is the follow-up so that we know that they complied? Do you want me to chase the Health District, is the Planning District, or will everybody report back to you that it's been completed, and then it comes, then you'll do an MIR or something?
Vince Kiano, for the record, so initially, when an application first gets submitted, our staff and assigned analysts will check with all of the appropriate public safety agencies to even, to determine if the event would even be possible or be in compliance with the respective agencies. And then, once the pre-approval is issued by the Board, then that analyst or the assigned staff member will follow that application all the way to the end to ensure that all of the public safety inspections and permits have been issued.
I think the idea, though, rightfully so, was that without our allowing it to move forward, we don't want them to invest a lot of time and energy.
No, that's fine, but I just want to make sure, because the problem that we have with some is that they start the application, but they don't finish it, right? So we see that tons in District B, so I'm just wondering, how do we know that it's all been buttoned up?
Just to add too, we also have a post-event worksheet that goes, that assesses the entire process from application to the conclusion of the event.
Could we then, Director, maybe, given that this is one of the first, distribute that to the entire Board when it's ready to be published?
Will do.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, I'm prepared to move for approval of the special event preliminary approval application for Holiday 1.
We have a motion by Commissioner Nat. Please cast your vote. And let the record reflect that Commissioner Jones is on line.
Commissioners, we can now move to the business section of your agenda. Item 45 is to identify emerging issues to be addressed by staff or by the Board at future meetings. Receive updates on the activities of the various regional boards and commissions and direct staff accordingly.
Commissioner Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to bring an issue up, not really an issue, but a project up, that I would like this Board to entertain, and I'd like to do a presentation at the next meeting. So the truth is, I've been sitting on Housing Committee after Housing Committee for the last 18 months. I sat on the Governor's one, I sat on all these inadvertently ones, and what I do know most is it's the same cast of characters with the different line every time, right? So the story changes at every meeting, depending on who the audience is. So I, and I met with the Secretary of Interior, the Secretary of Health, and all those things, but I think, one, Clark County has done yeoman's work. We are way ahead of the entire state, and quite frankly, in many cases, we're way ahead of the country with our land grant, our community grant trust fund thing that we have. And, one, I think that people should know about it a little bit more.
And one, I think that people should know about it a little bit more, but we did a presentation at the governor's housing committee and my own colleagues from other cities were like, we had no idea, we had no idea. So I guess they don't watch our meetings like we watch theirs, but that's okay too. But what they did say is they too, their staff is growing tired of all the different committees that they're on because we're all talking past each other. So I collected comments from a bunch of people at the last meeting, including the governor's office, including other cities, and I asked Marcy Hansen to help me to really make staff's time a little bit better. So I'd like Clark County to create a committee which other electeds can sit on from across the valley, but at least have some accountability and some movable measures. Governor's Office has agreed to it. The BLM thinks it's great because they're getting pulled in 900 different meetings themselves. They can actually get the work done. We'd like them to get the work done. So I just was wondering if there's a seat, there's a committee for everybody to chair or vice chair, but I just really feel like the county should be taking the lead because we have a model that is if we actually put a lot more time into it, we could do triple of what we're doing today. So kudos to the Dagny and her team, kudos to all these staff people that are doing the work, but now we need to like push everybody to row in the same direction with the same conversation. So I have a whole little thought process here, but I think that it's only fair to do a full presentation before the board to see if it's a direction that we'd like to go in.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to add that the many of us are working with the BLM on one thing or another, and it makes all the sense in the world now to finally determine that we understand where they're coming from and there is a way for all of us to collaborate so that we're all doing similar things, maybe not the same thing, but similar things. And this would give us a couple of relief valves. I mean, in the economy today and in the construction industry, there's a whole lot of there are a whole lot of questions about what the future holds. We need to figure that out. We've just been through a water meeting and we understand that neighbors, people who live in this valley are real concerned about where water, how water use is going to affect be affected by growth and there are decisions that we have to make. And then, of course, the one of the overarching problems that we've been plagued with for years now is the availability of affordable housing. And as we look at the things that Commissioner Kirkpatrick has done, we see that there is an opportunity there to work with the BLM on land availability in addition to all of the other things. So I think this is a really good idea and would encourage her to bring it back as quick as possible.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't think you need it, but of course, that's that's important. I guess two things I would just ask, knowing you, I'm sure you've already done this, but I would just wanted to see it have some like tangible outcomes. I'm sure that's probably in your hand right now.
Oh, you can rest assured that I'm going to get some outcomes.
The second thing is to Commissioner Gibson's point, in addition to BLM or interior, I think it's really important to include because of the CMA land, Department of Aviation. They could be a continue to be a big part of the solution.
So on the high level, here's kind of what I was thinking, like land availability and disposable committee, which could be things like some home builders, airport, LVCVA for that matter, right? And then streamlining the process, of course, staff around the valley because everybody swears our process is not fast. I don't know any other state that moves as fast as we do. And then really talking about the housing stock because I did a study in 2005 when I was in the legislature. It's the same study with 15 different interpretations of it, but it's not changed, right? And the number just keeps growing, but what do what do we have? Do we have enough middle missing gap? Do we have enough regular single family? Do we have enough million dollar homes? And maybe we go now to the 300,000 and we can't forget about multifamily, right? Do we need more 30% more 80%? And then I think that homeownership, people got to be able to choose because rent today for many with all those additional fees I talked to you guys about, it's unattainable because they can't even save because they're paying $300 for trash ballet or lifestyle adjustments. I'm exaggerating, but you know what I mean? And then most importantly, I think communication. So maybe all of the PIOs could get together and really talk about what that means because the issue, we're not singing the same tune and I think local governments, you know, were reacting to every news article when we're not doing anything wrong and maybe we should share our talking points with them so they could use them, right? Instead of just saying like there's an article today, regulatory processes with municipalities and I'm like, I seen that thing and probably threw it across the room because I thought, what the heck, we're always talking and working with these people. We can't change much more, right? So I think that communications could really do a lot, even with the home builders and even with the airport and all of the people kind of like we do with the jig, everything is better when we're all talking the same and nationwide. So I'm open to input, so if anybody has any ideas they specifically want me to include, please tell me, not the Monday before the next meeting, but sooner rather than later because I just think that we've done a lot, 300 and some million dollars just to fill the gap for the 30 to 60% AMI, and I think we have a model that may work.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea as well. Is there going to be a policy recommendation piece to that around housing?
Well, if anybody knows me, I'll have some expectations on what we should get out of it because I'm not going to a meeting to have another meeting, but there should be some expectations for every subcommittee and committee so that, one, we can call one, we can kind of move forward because, you know, as Jim and I talked about and I talked with Commissioner Jones, we've been all meeting with the same people and people are going to so many meetings, they can't actually execute anything we've asked them to. So this way, I'm good with the hammer to get some accountability.
Commissioner Gibson.
Thank you. As the Chair of the LVCVA Board, I wanted to provide a quick update on the brand-new campaign that the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority launched earlier this month. On the heels of a soft travel summer across the U.S. in what seemed like a campaign of an especially negative nature against and about Las Vegas, the LVCVA needed to help change that. The campaign was tested prior to launch to ensure that it would resonate with traveling audiences. Its portrayal of escape and transformation into more fun and energy is enticing and relatable for travelers. Campaign was launched on September 4th, NFL kickoff day, to ensure that it was launched with weight reaching a broad U.S. audience. Campaign is highlighting that the city that puts a smile on your face is one that will put your jaw on the floor. There have been several musical spots and social media ads developed, and we've partnered with high-profile celebrities, influencers and athletes to talk about the Vegas experience from their point of view. We have a couple of examples and I'd like the Victor to play media number one.
Is this what life is meant to be? Could there be something more for me? I'm just a little curious. Is there something more fabulous? I need something to chase, something to melt this face. I need Las Vegas. It's too much and never enough. Oh, welcome to fabulous. It's spectacular, outrageous, impossible stuff. You'll stop and yell, welcome to fabulous. I think this trip is good for my brain. Stay out tonight, you'll sleep on the plane. A world of absurd, a place to combust. This is Las Vegas. Welcome to fabulous.
Now, the campaign is also about not taking ourselves too seriously and interestingly, the ad is hacked. Local socio socio, excuse me, social media influences are using a new campaign ads to spotlight value on the strip, and we'd like to play media number two.
Okay, Venetian Canals in Vegas, classic, classic. I'll give you some gondol do's and gondol don'ts. Okay, first off, gondol do, book after 7:00 PM. It's $29. It's cheaper, great value. Gondol don't, don't shimmy a ton. She's doing like a light shimmy, which is okay. I did like a ton of shimmy and he got mad at me, but I mean, it's okay. It's on me, really. So that's that's my gondol do's and gondol don'ts of Vegas.
As we've seen this summer, much of the negative narrative is circulating around the high price of coming to Las Vegas. It was important for the social media campaign to focus on spots reinforcing value deals throughout Las Vegas. Number three, would you play that now, Victor?
Here are seven of the most fabulous deals in Las Vegas right now. For only $300, you can book a two-night stay with a $200 food and beverage credit at Flamingo, Harrah's and Malink's, and that includes the resort piece. If you're looking for something downtown, Plaza Hotel has an all-inclusive offer for only $125, and that includes breakfast, dinner and bottomless drinks at select restaurants. MGM Resorts is offering exclusive summer room rates with up to $150 food and beverage credit. And did you hear about Virgin's 555 deals? $5 tacos, $5 Cuervo shots and $5 blackjack. There's also $3 beers, $3 shots and $1.99 margaritas at all station casino properties. Daichi area's Flavortown Sports Kitchen has an all-you-can-eat brunch for only $19.99. Or head downtown for a $15.99 prime rib dinner special at Tony Roma's. These offerings are for a limited time, but you can find more of them on the fabulous deals page at visitlasvegas.com.
The hope is that the detractors will take into account that the campaign is bigger than just the ad. The campaign is broad enough that we acknowledge that there are some things that need to be adjusted. They're being adjusted and addressed as a part of the campaign, and it is really a broader branding campaign that will be up a while, and we're excited to see that it may work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now move to item number 46, to appoint a qualified individual to serve on the Airport Hazers Hazard Areas Board of Adjustment for a three-year term ending October 15, 2028.
I'll move the appointment of Lisa Kramer.
We have a motion by Commissioner Naff. Please cast your vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have no closed door today, so we can move to your next public comment section.
All right, this is final moment for public comment. This is your time to come forward on anything you would like. You will be allotted three minutes. Please state your first and last name for the record. I have a Salim Ayub. Please come forward.
It's Salem Ayub, 3079 Garnett Court, AYOOB. Wow, I'm going to make it short and sweet. Is that Chief Anderson over there too? I'm glad you're here. So here we go. 3080 Garnett Court, I came here two months ago. You know, we've been dealing with this property for 30 years. I got so much to squirrel on today, but you know, we're going to make it simple, especially with what happened a couple of weeks ago or whatever with this injunction. Well, it's an illegal injunction, first of all. From what I understand, I read the minutes, blah, 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 blah. We're going to suspend .080, .090 and .120, but she should have suspended 7.100, .200 because that's exactly what happened last weekend. We had two police incidents in the neighborhood. Now, like I said, these are direct results of problems that should have been handled by code enforcement a long time ago, and now they're turning into metropolitan police department issues. I spoke with Chairman Sigurland on the phone yesterday for 27 minutes, and the Sesame Street letter of the day is he because he was kind enough to come out with his, one of his assistants and his grandson Harper, and we stood in the blazing sun for about 45 minutes beating up with sweat, and I explained everything to him about this property. But we're in a criminal phase now because Nevada law dictates that this is a chronic nuisance. So I just want to get on the record, since myself and a couple of the neighborhood watch people tracked down the owner of this property, which is pretty easy, since I picked one of these up two months ago. It's the Cole family out at 3046 Villanelle Avenue in Henderson. Now, not only did they flip 723 seclusion Glenn in 2023, they also own 5551 Corral Circle, which is up for sale. They also own 8951 Venetia Street, which is up for sale, and they're trying to dump 3080 right now, all by realtors from the greatest Las Vegas area, Real Estate Association. I mean, talk about conflict of interest. Now, I'm not in completely implicating the honest real estate people, but I've talked to some of them too. They all know that there's about a 30% inflation on the prices of the housing. So we're going to we're going to we're going to slap this right in the face right now. And let me just bring this up and I'll read it and then I'll get out of here because I don't want to really don't want to cause anybody any problems, but we're just going to have to do it this way. 7.100, 200. Gosh. Okay, Section A, it's the powers of the county. Any department, board or agency of the county may take immediate action when necessary to address emergencies or urgent complaints regarding public peace, health, safety, order or welfare without first notifying the licensee, local representative or property owner, without first issuing a notice of violation or citation. So I want to shout out to the police officers that showed up. They were very professional and they did their jobs. We're just going to be checking IDs on everybody because if I got to play the king of spades, after 48 hours, the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department recognizes a residential stay and that's a violation.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please. And anything you would like to submit, just submit it to your right to the clerks. Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Wilhelm Percival. I'm living at 8425 Telescope Peak Court, 89145 Las Vegas. I am very unhappy with the situation that's unfolding at North Las Vegas Airport. I own a small hangar there that when I was on active duty at Nellis Air Force Base, I put up with a buddy of mine, an air force buddy, in order to hold the two home-built airplanes that I made in my garage. The Department of Aviation has not been at all forthcoming about the future of the land leases that our hangars sit on. I'm concerned that the implied threat of lease cancellation, lease termination or reversion, as it's called, has already impacted the value, the resale value of my hangar. I counted on this value for part of my retirement planning and for that of my sister, my 79-year-old sister, who's co-owner of this hangar. Why is this non-renewal being considered? Ben Sazuski, a Department of Aviation official at an August 20th meeting, said that the FAA requires reversion clauses of leases be exercised. This is false. FAA case law, specifically 160519, Clark versus the City of Almagordo, rebuts this assertion. The FAA said there is no requirement to exercise lease reversion. Sazuski either misunderstood or intentionally misrepresented this fact. The FAA is not to blame for this move to grab our hangars, but it's a Department of Aviation move and one that possibly is in contravention of Grant Assurance 22, economic nondiscrimination, which requires the airport be made available for all classes and types of aeronautical activities. I can't have my two fiberglass airplanes sitting on a hot ramp for years, so if you guys take my hangar, my aviation activity at North Las Vegas Airport will end, along with the charity rides that I give to Young Eagle kids. Moreover, if you decide to take my hangar at the end of the lease, my sister and I will suffer hundreds of thousands of dollars of economic damage due to the fact that I can't sell the hangar. Why is this happening? Does this have anything to do with the obvious conflict of interest between certain DOA employees and World Fuel? Do they want to take my hangar and bulldoze it for Gulfstream parking so they can sell more gas? I want my lease renewed at the end of its present term. I also want the DOA to be more transparent with its planning and intentions. An MOU between the DOA and the hangar owners would be the first positive step in this relationship in years. So I in years, so I support an MOU. Also, I think it's high time to establish a formal Citizens Advisory Board focused on the DOA to bring a little daylight to this really dark corner of Clark County government. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here, and if you'd like to submit your items to the clerk so we can take a look, please submit them. Welcome.
My name is Lawrence Frank. I live at 12624 Heritage Heights Drive, Las Vegas. I have to endorse everything the previous speaker just said. I am a resident of Clark County. I am part of the community that is North Las Vegas Airport by being a pilot, a hangar owner, and a frequent user of the small businesses that are located there. What the Clark County Department of Aviation is proposing is a serious threat to this community. It took many decades to get this community up and running, and now it is at risk, indeed is slowly being trampled on by the unelected bureaucrats and overzealous administrators and employees of the airport. In the name of progress, they are seeking to destroy what is working for 98% of the community. This is unconscionable and must be discussed in several public forums going forward, not just behind closed doors, as it has been up to now. This is a serious challenge affecting thousands of Clark County citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Tim Ross, R-O-S-S, 2537 Dayspring Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. We did have a meeting recently with the CCDOA. I especially appreciate Commissioner McCurdy being there. That meant a lot to us. We met for over two hours with the CCDOA. We didn't accomplish a whole lot, but they understand our issues better now, and I'd always worked previously in the private industry, and I'm used to things working a lot faster than they do in government. It's hard for me to adapt to how long it takes to get things done. I used to manage 50 engineers, and if we had an issue in Chicago, I would go to Chicago that day and resolve the issue. We had to do things right away, not six months down the road. And someone at the CCDOA recommended that we hire a consultant to help with this lease renewal process. Now, the CCDOA has had 18 years approximately to prepare for these lease renewals, and now they want to hire a consultant to do their job for them. We needed to sit down like adults and work through this thing. We do not need a consultant to do this. This will extend the time needed to get these things done, and we do not need a consultant. If the person that recommended that cannot work and sit down as an adult, we need to get someone else to do our negotiating for them. We learned a few things when we were at the CCDOA, but we did not learn anything about the conflict of interest investigation into Ben Sazuski. I mean, is this being addressed? Is this being just swept under the rug? We have real concerns there, these being addressed or not. We know what a conflict of interest looks and feels like. It's like when a jet owner is forgiven of a $3,000 tie-down fee, but the small aircraft owner, the single-engine aircraft owner, is told that his shade hangar is going up 250%. It's when employees take training to make sure that the jet passengers feel welcome. But then they send out notices to the hangar buyers that just bought an airplane, and it says their leases will not be renewed. That was very shocking to them. That lowers the value of our personal property and makes it unsalable. When the CCDOA says they will not rebuild shade hangars... this is our third example. When they will not rebuild shade hangars because it costs too much money, but then they spend $1 million to replace the floor in the terminal. There was nothing wrong with the floor in the terminal, but the marble floor makes the jet visitors feel more like an exclusive experience. This poor treatment of VGT hangar owners is so that VGT can pander to the jet aircraft owners instead of serving the local small aircraft owners, and so Ben Sazuski can look good for World Fuel instead of serving the Clark County taxpayers. Thank you for your time. I see you deal with some very complex issues here. I appreciate you.
You have no idea. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you for your time, Commissioners. My name is David Ace Ball, A-C-E, B as in boy, A-L as in Larry. I'm here today, I'm sorry, a little bit nervous. I'm just here to say that 200 people have already died in fatalities for accidents here. Back in 2014, I started a thing called Drive 35, which was just to have a uniform of speed limit from 45 to 35. Where I'm from, from Chicago, there's not one speed limit over 35 miles per hour. According to the Speed Management Action Plan, the chances of a fatality from an accident at 30 miles per hour is 40%, but at 40, it's 80%, so it doubles. Basically, ultimately, Clark County Board of Commissioners have the final authority to establish speed limits, and I understand that a lot of different people are involved, N-dots involved on this, but I understand that people would be frustrated to have to drive 35 versus 45 on streets such as Sahara, Flamingo, Buffalo, and I understand that you guys aren't in control over those streets as well. But I do want to say that if you've ever tried turning left on Flamingo across six lanes of traffic, it's pretty intimidating. And then also, you see a school bus drop kids off on Flamingo when cars are zooming by at a 45 mile per hour speed limit. So this is just a vision that I've had for a long time, and I think it would save life. So sorry again that I'm super nervous, and I'm just looking for someone to work with and represent Clark County, represent the state, and working in reducing speed limits from 45 to 35 miles per hour.
Thank you so much for being here. If you can just hang tight, and someone will come speak with you after the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Matthew Watson, 9693 Todd Lake Court, 89149, Commissioner Becker's district. I wrote to you and Commissioner McCurdy about this issue a few weeks ago. The Department of Aviation is not committed to extend hangar leases at North Las Vegas Airport, some of which end in under two years. Why? Possibly to create space for large, fuel-thirsty jets that will buy lots of fuel and pay landing fees to create more revenue for the department. I recently purchased a small hangar at the airport and might lose it in under two years. Why buy a hangar? Will the lease may expire in two years? The lease says that the Director of Aviation or his designee, quote, "agrees to consider a possible new lease or extension of this agreement for the premises." I had faith in the Department of Aviation would act reasonably and not remove general aviation tenants, the types of pilots Howard Hughes favored when he deeded the property to North Las Vegas. Surely, the Department of Aviation would not act to remove hangars for small aircraft in one of two airports in the Las Vegas area available for such use, and I do apologize for calling all of you "surely." My faith may have been naive, as it appears the Department of Aviation might not consider new leases or extensions. A consent to assignment I received from the department includes language requiring me to acknowledge that, quote, "County has not made any express or implied or written representation or promise that County will grant an extension of the term or enter into any other modification of the hangar agreement." This language appears in all recent consents. Not considering new leases or extensions is contrary to the lease language I read you. On July 25th, I notified the department I would not sign the consent to assignment, given the contradiction. I have yet to hear back. Hangar leases should be extended at North Las Vegas Airport. The hangar structures are sound and should be for many years to come. The airport has sufficient space either to move hangars or create new parking areas for large airplanes. So many amenities in Las Vegas are not for residents of Las Vegas. Removing local pilots from the airport would be a disservice to your constituents. To be direct, I have this request. Please don't take our hangars. Please do extend hangar leases. Taking hangars would be a great loss for local pilots. There are simply no viable alternatives to the North Las Vegas Airport and the Las Vegas area for owners of small planes. Without places to park planes, many pilots might be forced to leave general aviation. If you and the Department of Aviation work with pilots and other stakeholders, you can find a win-win solution that increases airport revenue and keeps an important resource for your constituents. Should any of you be interested in a tour of my small hangar or a flight in a small plane, I would be happy to oblige. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is David Barber, 9303 Gilcrees Avenue, and I would like to just state my personal situation here. I'm in the midst of obtaining a hangar out there. It started in the spring. The previous owner had no knowledge of the leases, the way they were being handled, so the knowledge of the possible termination of leases was not presented to me prior to me purchasing this by giving him a check. I'm still in the process of finalizing this. I submitted the paperwork on the 20th of June. It took me about a month to get everything together and get it submitted to them, and the last time I checked, the previous owner's name is still on the legal documents that he still owns it, even though he received a check from me a long time ago. It's very concerning to have so much money tied up into something that I figured that I'd be able to own and enjoy for years to come, and to see that this might terminate in two or three years, it's devastating. I'm retired military. I've saved all my life for this to happen, and I was really excited to get this started and become involved in the community out here, and I hope that this can be resolved in a very quick manner and positive for those who are involved with the airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Peter McCready's. Yeah, 11911 Vector Ray Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. I've lived in Las Vegas now for eight years. I moved from California to start my small business because I felt like Nevada had better support for small business. I am a small business owner. I own an aerial mapping company with a hangar out of North Las Vegas. We own 10 aircraft. We fly over 5,000 hours a year. I'm an airline transport pilot. And three years ago, I considered moving everything to Texas, because it didn't feel like Nevada supported small business like the dream that I had when I moved here. And it's becoming very clear now, working with the Department of Aviation, that it's becoming increasingly difficult to do that as a small business. I feel strongly that the objectives of the Department of Aviation can work in conjunction with the small businesses in Las Vegas and the private owners of aircraft and support general aviation. I believe that there is a solution that works for all and continuing to drive solid revenue for the city of Las Vegas and the county while also supporting the needs of the little guy. And I believe that there's been a proposed memorandum of understanding between the hangar owners and the DOA. A couple of points, which would include transparency from the DOA, better support for small business aviation, renew hangar land leases, and also the formation of a Clark County Aviation Advisory Board, and that's what I'm supporting today. Thank you. And I believe there's one more speaker.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and honorable members. May it please the Commission, my name is Jeffrey Lustig. I live at 200 Hoover, and I am the attorney for the North Las Vegas Hangar Owners Group. I want to thank Commissioner McCurdy especially for taking the time to participate in our recent meeting. His presence meant a great deal to our members and showed that this commission is indeed listening. At North Las Vegas Airport, more than 150 privately-owned hangars sit on land leased from the county. These facilities represent millions in private investment. They house airplanes flown by small business operators, flight instructors, and private pilots. They keep general aviation alive in Clark County and remain vital in our aviation community. In the recent weeks and recent days, we've had a constructive dialogue with CCDOA. We've been told that they do not intend to forcibly remove tenants and that general aviation will remain part of the airport's future, but time will tell. The Department has also acknowledged lease expirations and discussed reversion clauses and offered some clarification. This is good progress, and we appreciate it. But that's not enough. There are several issues that remain unresolved. Uncertainty continues over whether leases will be renewed and under what terms. Owners still risk losing major investments if reversion policies are not clarified. Hangar owners want clearer communication and a real voice in the master planning process. And finally, there are still conflicts of interest. CCDOA officials both regulate general aviation and oversee the relationships with fuel vendors and commercial operators. That dual role creates the appearance that independent hangar owners are not treated... that our hangar owners are treated differently and which serves to undermine the trust in the process. To address these issues, we respectfully urge the Commission to take two critical steps. First, adopt the proposed memorandum of understanding to provide a clear framework for lease renewals, reversion, and retention rights, and to create predictable policies. Secondly, to support creation of a Citizens Advisory Board for oversight of our aviation department. Other county and city agencies have already benefited from this oversight process, and aviation should not be an exception. An advisory board with the hangar owners generally... an advisory board with hangar owners, general aviation users, and community representatives would ensure accountability. North Las Vegas can grow to meet... the North Las Vegas Airport can grow to meet new aviation's demands without undermining the stability of long-term tenants. With the adoption of the MOU and the creation of advisory board, the Commission can strengthen trust and give the aviation community a meaningful role in shaping the airport's future. I thank you for your time, Commissioner, and I also want to thank, again, Commissioner McCurdy for engaging us directly, and we look forward to working with this Commission and with the new CCDOA Director, who is present here today, to receive a fair and transparent and aviation-friendly future at North Las Vegas. And finally, I would like to also extend an invitation to all Commissioners to come to the airport and see our hangars and go flying with us. You'll enjoy that, and it'll be a great way to see our airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Becker had a quick comment.
I would like to take this opportunity, since we do have the airport here, I would like to see those leases, if I could. If I could see the leases that... I would like to have copies of all of the tenant leases that you guys have so that I can look at it and see exactly what the terms are, so that we're not just hearing everyone complain, because as someone... I work with leases, and I've been a tenant and a landlord, so I would just like the opportunity to see the leases and see what exactly is going on.
And, Mr. Chair, if we can just... it's not on the agenda, so the request to see the leases is fine, but we really don't want to have a discussion at this point, so...
Thank you, and Jim will follow up. Is there anyone else wishing to come down during public comment? Hearing say no one, this meeting is in recess until tomorrow at 9:00 a.m.